Are you?
Did you tell my car?
Dorothy was having some crazy ideas.
Can't go to speed, where are we?
Nowhere.
No, nobody's started that.
We didn't even start it. Well, that's a shock. Okay, uh, good morning, we'll, we'll start. Oh. Yes. I got here early this morning, uh, good evening. Let's call our work session, we're just going over some, some, uh, items. So the minutes for the June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, anybody have any issues, whether they're regular session, work session, or executive meeting minutes? Any questions, any issues? Hearing that, speak up, almost speed up, we go through. Um, our guy from Day of the Dead, do we have him, or is he just gonna show up for the regular meeting?
No, he, he was here at the last meeting, he won't be back.
So this is just basically the approval of what we have?
What you discussed last night.
Okay, pretty much it's a similar concept to what we did before. Any issues or concerns, uh, related to, um, you know, a good partner, a simple man, any issues?
No, Ethan?
Anybody else?
Nothing has changed since the last meeting.
Except that we added the sentence that clarified that if, if, that he can't charge to have, uh, the public use the, the activities only for food and beverage.
Got it. So we're all good, we're just keeping, uh, T-Row proposals, I know a number of things were updated, uh, recently, including some other things which might be what the tenant really wants, and there was a fourth proposal, uh, and I don't know that it was completed until recently, very recently. Uh, so we can defer that, but please review what you do have, I think there's at least, the information is not complete enough on at least two of them, and then the third one that I just saw in the mailbox seems to be the preferred one by the potential tenants.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so we, we will, uh, commit to putting it in a reassembled package tomorrow and getting it to all of you, uh, via email, so that you will have the time between this meeting and next to review it in its totality.
And at least three of them are, are, are complete.
Yes, yes, sir.
We've got the references, we've got the projects, we've got the different things.
In fact, Ms. Johnson's here with us tonight, um...
How you doing?
How are you?
And, and I, I think you prefer that we'll be seriously consider the, the, the one group that you just put out, the GTT or something?
Yeah.
So it's worth kind of holding off just a little bit to make sure of all that, and I saw the proposal, it looked fairly reasonable. Um, any questions, comments, and concerns related to those, and I would insist we have a recommendation post-op by the council. Questions, comments? Chris Van.
Uh, yes, so if we, let's say if we were going to, uh, this item tonight, that will be the city having the commitment to be responsible for the cost of the, uh, cost of the design.
Yes.
Um, what do, what commitment do we have on the potential best, uh, because what year, team change, and they are not, uh, going to the move forward to the plan, uh, if they are to attract, and different, uh, different best come in, and they don't find that the design that we are ready to pay for, what we would be engage the city agreement?
Okay.
What commitment do we have with this potential best?
Okay, th- this particular space is four thousand square feet, it's pretty much laid out as a restaurant, it has the potential to also mainly serve part of the conference center, even though that's not gonna be a proper use, um, and that's just playing back. Most of what this design is gonna have, maybe you could make the argument for, uh, maybe some of the architectural details on the front, but I got a feeling the kitchen itself, uh, the, the water, power, sewer, gas, HVAC, and different things like that is not gonna be a starter. In other words, the city would own the plans, so that we would have the ability to market it appropriately to the council. We managed to bring in a private player who has an interest as it sits, which is complicated unto itself. It would certainly make it very easy for us to market this to somebody else. They might say, I don't want that particular floor tile, or a lot of that, but that is not a starter, and when you look at it for what we have, um, I, I think that answer's gonna be, um, the city should own it so that we really don't start over with somebody else completely, um, and, and that gives us the ability to control it. We don't anticipate the tenant walking away, they, they've got good financials, I believe you all have those, um, I'm, I'm not sure why, uh, they would walk away, um, but in the event that they did, I don't see that we have tremendous risk. Um, we would own a set of plans and we'd be able to cost them out, so right now we might have a little bit of a time crunch, but in the future we could get a couple of different contractors and say, oh, we can build this out, we know it's gonna be above a hundred thousand, we know it's gonna be a bid, and we could always accept bids, reject all of them, but then we would know what it would cost. True, right, and isn't that really one of the points of discussion as to what it would truly take to build something like this? Right? But yes, it's ours, if that's the question. Other questions?
Would we be able to ask if we're going to work with that on, by the contractor that we begin, would we be able to ask something to give the city, the bill of the protection of, if we don't, the, the, the deal of forceful, the air, we would be responsible for the cost, some of the costs that we pay for, for this design?
I, I wouldn't worry about the cost of the design at this number, okay? Um, once we have the design and we have a cost number, I'm sure there's gonna be some discussions back and forth, some of that is usually the responsibility of the owner of the property, such as the restrooms are canvassing, uh, air conditioning is canvassing, and electrical panel is canvassing, or, 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 now if they're out there putting more shag carpet in the walls, yeah, that's probably not it, uh, so it wasn't the nineteen-seventies thing, but, um, but, so I, I think that's, um, you gotta have better answers than we have right now, but you have to have the designs to be able to get the answer.
And, uh, and this probably be on, who is, URA, am I correct?
I believe the URA owns that building, that is correct.
The T-R? No, I think we own the T-R. I think the URA owns the dock space in the exhibit center.
So the city maintains the ownership, we do?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a surprise. Um, they say we do, but even if it didn't, it, it doesn't really make a difference?
Well, I don't know if we have a great day to play for these reasons, but it probably is URA owned, and I raised that concern with the city authority to get a legal advice.
Yeah, I saw that, um, let, let me answer one of the questions in my opinion, um, the URA chairman's here today, when you have a final decision, just like you would have a final decision to take before the city council, where we have a final decision, that's a recommendation, you get to make the final decision, the city council gets to make the final decision. There's a number of people who are gonna have negotiations based on the expertise of what they have in mind, that doesn't mean anything, that's the art of negotiating. You have an idea of what it's gonna take, we have an idea of what it's gonna take, and it gets tighter and tighter as we go through, at some point, you make a decision, right? And that's gonna go out on paper, and once you get to a meeting of the minds, you know, we negotiate, we all kind of agree, then we put that in front of the attorneys, so that they make sure it's approved per form, right, and then everybody knows what they're gonna have. So I think if it's the URA's property, they're gonna make the final decision, but they don't have the staff, as a matter of fact, all of their staff is our staff, so how are we not negotiating? If they don't have any people, it doesn't make any sense. So I think in the end, we're, like I say, as a, as a team, we're the entity body that's on the field, and we're going to do that. The private sector has brought us what they're looking for, um, now we're just moving it down, down, around. Pretty much everybody knows what we're doing, so, and if y'all have some really cool advice that might save us a few dollars of time, we've got people who listen to you.
On the, um, the document that was sent to us regarding the, uh, third...
To me, the T-R?
Yes, um, there was something about an upper level VIP lounge.
Yes, well, it would be, what we say at upper level, I think it would be an ass. When you're looking at all of the spaces, let's assume four thousand people per, per year, um, you wouldn't be building above a kitchen area, because there's certain areas that would be, let's say the restrooms and things like that, that would be just an elevated set of steel, we have twenty-foot ceiling to get to additional floor space, you could just take a, a steel structure, build your second floor, over an area that's not gonna require a twenty-foot ceiling. Well, I think this is just trying to maximize the floor space, and that would be something if the cost numbers got up there and we had that discussion, if the cost numbers get to a certain point, I got a feeling that pack goes away, or say it's a, a plan that we could do later, maybe we put in, you know, some skewer columns or something, so that at some point when she's rich, um, we can afford to rent this one. But again, that's the beauty of the design, until you have the design, you don't really know. Other questions? Renee? For those...
The restaurant ideas, it's what, the idea is what we would, uh, support, like, best as much as we can, um, and we just need to make sure generally, together legal advice to ensure that we do take it, uh, first. And, uh, I have a comment from this, but not really related to these items, um... That, um, and I have raised this concern before, just like for the package of the meeting and I, the agenda itself is a hundred twenty-two pages. It was not my mother language, and it takes me longer time to read to understand what, where I could be comfortable with making the decision. So the package this time will deliver on, on Friday, and I have full time job, so I would not be able to read through right away, and it has contained ninety-eight pages related to this ma, this decision, and all of, most of it contains terminology technical that I would need, which would even make it harder for a non-native speaker to follow through, to understand, to make sure that I got the idea of what it is, and I'm asking moving forward, could we have the information delivered to the council sooner, so I could, I would be able to have enough time to read through the items, to understand them, to be comfortable to make the decision.
And I think we've reiterated this before, and nobody's holding on to the information, you're getting it as soon as we get it, um, so it, it's almost implied that, you know, I had some of this data for two weeks, and then we just gave it to you that we didn't, you know, some of this data we did get late in the afternoon, which is one of the reasons why you defer it, and plus we have some other things. If, if it's not critical, you know, we'll do the best we can, um, as far as being able to comprehend it, I, I don't know that, you know, that's, it depends on which subject matter we're talking about. So ninety-eight pages sounds like a lot, but this is not, you know, ninety-eight pages. In some cases, you're seeing pictures where somebody has done a project, it's a visual, you know, that's the project we completed, we asked for, this is a resident decision, you know, to fucking go. So, to some degree, I agree, and then to others, I would just say that you got to, to read it, um, but I read some of that, you know, three o'clock, three-thirty, uh, just to keep it active, so, um, in the private sector and the public sector, yeah, sometimes you're gonna get information as it comes, and that's fair, and we give it to you as we get it, nobody's holding, uh, so we'll do the best we can.
And would we be able to put it on the works section for the discussion to us, and then we have enough time to understand the subject to where we don't have to get, to, to have to make, in the spots where we have to make the decisions in season, right away in a few days, what, um, we, that I rarely understand, like this case, I will struggle because I would, I didn't know where was going on, I do a talk with the city manager yesterday, and it is making it hard to perform, yeah.
Like I said, I think we'll do the best we can. Other questions? Anybody else? Thanks, Van. Um, Lake Harbor and Curbin Gutter Splotch, two thousand fourteen, the only thing that this really does is, we, we know we've had a Lake Harbor project that deals with sidewalks, but it's also Curbin Gutter, and we know we got some challenges with that, that is not what we're asking about. This one is just simply identifying the funds that were used, but an example would be general funds, Splotch funds, in this case it's Splotch funds, and when using Splotch funds, you have to identify which year you have, we have a two thousand eight Splotch, which is now taking care of, so the remaining Splotch is two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, whichever way you call it. So we, we couldn't find the document that basically had, where we had identified that explicitly, and this is just us covering our bases, I would imagine that Chris is on the phone, hopefully, uh, to be able to just say, look, that's where it comes from. So that's the totality of that, um, is identifying Splotch two thousand fourteen, not the project itself, even though we'll have a discussion about the project, but this is just that, for the, for the work session and the regular meeting. Any discussions about that I, I don't know.
Uh, no, I don't have any particular discussion items, but just, uh, requesting a follow-up from Chris, I think we talked about it at the last meeting, with the change of the fiscal year, wanting to close out one fiscal year, moving into another, the, uh, information with regard to Splotch expenditure, so that we understand what has been spent, what has been allocated, and what is remaining, and additionally, um, the DMO reimbursement to the city, just circling back.
And just to clarify that, I, I owe you an apology, I did finish the Splotch report this past, a week, uh, but, and I, I sent it to Sylvia, but I failed to send it to all of council, my apologies on that, uh, the, the question on the DMO, we're still crunching those numbers, but, um, I, I will have you the Splotch report within the next five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all good. Uh, our roofing, that's a change of one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars, and I think that's the decking we talked about the last time.
The plywood, yes.
Anything, any, any questions, comments, concerns related to that?
Instead of decking, was there...
Plywood.
...issue by the roof, I mean, um...
That was a variable on the end, what?
Yes, because that was already part of the proposal, and I think we got some insurance funds that are helping cover for that, but what we did was we said this is the number, but they didn't know if they had decking problems, what that would be, we said, when they found out the answer, they'd come back to us and we allocate the additional funds.
So was there any factors we replaced on, on, on the roof?
Uh, one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars worth.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Fifty dollars a sheet, or whatever they could get for it, they, they'll face it, that's it.
Okay, yeah, the insurance, uh, just, uh...
Well, he did come out and, uh, uh, looked at the property, he sent me an email as he was leaving that said he did see a lot of damage, and that we would be talking early this week, but I didn't get a chance to speak with him today, I suspect we'll talk tomorrow, but I felt that the email was promising, he saw damage, and, um, you know, that's generally when we see an insurance, uh, making good on a claim, so, that he was looking at all of the roofs for all of the buildings, not just this one.
But this is our total fifteen thousand six forty?
For, for the roof?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're just...
So when we have, when we have the, would we adjust the approval from the council that amount yet?
Uh, we're just voting on the difference, we've already approved the first section, this was, we had them come back and ask for the additional, that's what was requested at the last council.
Yeah, and my question is that when they... They ask for our damage, this project, with this item being, with, uh, the different amount, will be brought to the council to, to adjust the approval amount?
Uh, no, you, you approved a certain number, tonight you're approving the difference.
Thank you.
When the insurance comes in, that just is gonna go into, back into the Splotch fund, or it's gonna go into the general fund, I guess, Splotch, right, took it from there and give it back.
Typically, we wouldn't need council approval to have less money spent on a project, but...
Or, or accept it, any, anytime somebody gives us insurance, we, we don't...
There may be some sort of agreement, you have to, uh, transact with the insurance company, that would take your approval, as any contract does, but just accepting the money wouldn't take your approval.
But if we wreck a car and we get paid for that, we don't...
That's what I'm saying, we don't typically, you know, have a council approval to receive that money.
Not that they just get a wrecking car.
Yeah.
You good, Van? Too soon.
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, keep going, go ahead.
May I clarify, um, this, this, um, fifteen, six forty is coming out of what fund?
So, so it was originally a Splotch identified expenditure, and when they brought us the original, uh, proposal, it did not include plywood, so because it is a Splotch expenditure, you have to approve the excess of the approved amount in order for it to also come out of Splotch.
Right, I did that, I'm, I'm, sir, my question is, the insurance reimbursement, will that go, where will that go?
Well, that, that's probably got some legal, uh, implications, but it's either going to go into the general fund, or back into the Splotch fund, which it can.
Okay.
Okay, uh, word is twenty-one oh nine, annuals building second reading, this is just basically putting our feedback to our, uh, cleaning down, any discussions on that? All right, now this one probably has some discussion, uh, resolution twenty-one dash oh six, as most people have probably figured out, outside of the snap through that basically took place on our, you know, uh, fair market value thing from the county, we're realizing that a number of homes in the city of Marham are appreciating it back, and sooner or later, maybe not so much this year for everybody, but next year, these numbers might go up through the market, and you're gonna see, basically, a tax increase, with the theory that we basically offset everything based on our bills, it's not necessarily always true, and the idea years ago was to have home state exemption of, basically, uh, the hundred and fifty thousand in fair market value, there's an assessment of this, forty percent of that, which is talking about fair value for what people have, and that was a reasonable number of homes in the city, but that was in two thousand four, so if you're looking at your values going up, one of the ways to protect yourself, and this is your choice, this is the city council giving the citizens the right to basically, um, vote at this next election, to increase your home state exemption from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, and that protects you as the market goes up, it's up to everybody else, the county, the school board, whatever, if they're gonna adjust it, I can't control that, uh, but this is giving you the right to be able to do it, if, if, and for no other reason, from two thousand four to today, just the CPI adjustment numbers exceed that, to be honest, um, but what we're asking for is, is a reasonable number, and that's the worst, discussions.
Um, this is going to, he's going to own that citizen?
Absolutely.
And that's gonna be, who?
Uh, November?
Yes, that's November, okay.
If we're hurt, it's a certain time, okay?
We got that.
Any, any questions, comments, concerns?
So this is still the county's gonna handle that as well?
They, they're still, whatever, our final bill is...
I mean, uh, source is, is unvalued, okay?
Well, we...
Valued and available.
Well, because they're doing the elections for us, that actually would be sad.
Correct. And, and there are some steps that won't be taken until after the tax digest comes out, so that, you know, we had talked about that in an earlier work session.
And, and just to enact the resolution, oh, we, or not the, uh, resolution, but the opportunity to be able to vote on it, make sure that it's all, we're just doing a resolution, and that's all it's requiring.
For, for this step, yes, sir?
Okay, so looking forward to that, and ultimately the citizens get to decide themselves for a con, you get this time. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing that, okay. Um, resolution twenty-one oh seven, and that was, um, Chris, if you could chime in here, this is where the GMA four oh one and four fifty-seven, where we're basically appointing a, a different company, and you can follow that with the one right below it, which is the twenty twenty-one oh eight, uh, transfer for GMA's, which is, uh, a successor as well, and I think everybody who is in a current program gets to keep that program, it would just be new employees.
Well, they, the current people will have a one-time choice to, to switch or stay, but yes, then moving forward, it will only be offered to, to the new employees, and Chris may wanna say more about that.
Yeah, that, uh, that part was approved previously at a council meeting, uh, GMA had, in our agreement with them, that to leave GMA, we will provide them with a council-approved resolution, uh, and they've, they've given us this template, and we've filled in all the blanks to, uh, have approved and sent back to them, they've already started with some of the administrative, uh, record-keeping and everything that needs to get ported over, uh, but they have asked for an official word from council that, yes, we, we are in fact leaving, and this was in fact approved by council.
All good? Questions, comments? We'll keep going. Mr. Warren, turn on, I'm sorry.
Related to this matter, or have been retired, three times attorney, not any attorney, or three times attorney to look at that, and has that been done?
Yeah, we, we are sending, uh, any agreements that we have, uh, going back and forth with One America, we are sending them, uh, to our attorney, who is, who is passing it on to the appropriate person in the firm that, that is competent in this area to review and prepare, and then they're sending back their, uh, confirmations with that via email, and any of the documents that the mayor needs to execute, they're not being passed to him until they have been signed off by the attorney.
When you say competent, uh, about this area, that means that's a retired attorney?
That means that, well, an attorney's an attorney, it means they're sure, they're trained and knowledgeable in this area to provide, uh, their expert advice on it.
Thank you.
Mayor, before you skip to Warren, if you may, um, just to clarify, an email that we exchanged earlier, the executive session, that's on the agenda, we would ask mayor that you call for an amendment to the agenda to clarify that the executive session is to discuss legal matters, because that, that language was left off the agenda.
Say it again?
Just, you're gonna call for a motion to amend the agenda to add legal matters to the subject matter for executive session.
So if I just have the executive session, that's out of town?
And we need to identify what, what one of the three protected discussions are, and that's legal matters, in this case.
Okay, I'll just ask for that question, if everybody else is, because that pretty much finishes up the agenda, anyone, uh, do I hear a motion, uh, as stated by the city mayor?
No, you'll have to do that when you approve, when you go into the regular meeting, I'm sorry. I just wanted to discuss it.
All right, all right. Keep it straight. Timing matters. All right, Warren? I see a whole bunch of stuff out there.
Yeah, eighteen thousand dollars worth of wood you gave? Eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, a thing? I'm not mistaken, um, but no, there's a lot going on, uh, there is a lot going on tomorrow, center, and good evening, everybody, um, so first, I think I wanna say that, well, the last time I spoke to you guys was June eighth, from June ninth until today, we brought in forty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, um, and our July projection is at fifty, at currently at fifty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents, and the proj, the projection I gave you guys last time I was here was twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-two, so that's a big jump from, from, for, uh, as far as July, uh, a lot of things still, uh, getting repaired, a lot of fixes, so we're still working, definitely working with Sylvia, V, um, you know, everyone, that Gerald is amazing, uh, on some HVAC, uh, update on the HVAC, we're not all the way there yet, we are getting better, um, but it's, still need some things done, there's still some systems, I think V, uh, you wanna just chime in, let you know, the last part, I think there's like two last parts that we need?
Yes, the communication for the RTU, um, is not working effectively yet, so they're going to, uh, just, and they're going to implement the communication to control the RTU there, so that would be a cost associated with it, uh, but I haven't got a quote back from them yet.
So right now, they've jumped, so when that, speaking there, I mean, JCI, they, what's called junk outs, a bunch of our, I guess, something, I'm not even seeing that guy, but they're jumping, meaning that they're keeping the vents open and the air conditioning cold out, so there's a constant flow of air just to make sure that it's kept cold in certain areas. Now that we'll see what the power bill says when it comes out, so that's always going to be fun to look at, kind of journeying that, but right now the clients have not complained, and we're no longer having to refund or make things good, it's right now, it's comfortable and chilly in the mall center, so.
Good news, all right.
Still have a little ways to go, though. The Wellness Center has picked up quite a bit. I think we're booking about almost six or seven events this month, opposed to three or four, and we're getting more calls, more calls, and more calls. Our analytics still have gone up, it's gone up by another twelve percent for the last thirty days, so that's great. We're getting, oh, so this month, up until since last month to this month, we've got inquiries from twenty-one states across the country, from California all the way to Maine. So those are just, I mean, it's amazing, and, you know, it's like the doors plus building after COVID, and everyone's back to normal. We have hired an intern from Clayton State University, her name is Georgia Martin. She'll be serving in three roles, one as an intern to handle social media, because Lord knows we need that. She'll also be a sales assistant, which will be getting a really small amount for, and she's also serving as a bartender, so we found a three in one, which is fantastic, and she's amazing. So love her dearly, can never lose her. So, okay, so some happenings, real recap, FX is Atlanta, in case anyone didn't know what was going on with the city, is the show Atlanta featuring Golden Globe and Grammy Award winner Don Glover, AKA Childish Gambino, for all things, and he's been great over there, looking, and they're also looking, oh, sorry, so this is the first episode of season three, and right now they're filming two seasons at once, and they're looking at possibly filming additional two scenes inside of the model center space, one being the loading dock for some kind of danger episode, and the other one being the actual grand lobby of the model center for a Grammy award featured episode. So they're, we're in negotiations for that now, so if we just cross that, we might not. They're looking at a couple of the sites. There are going to be about four to five thousand people in the model center and the model center parking lot come this Friday for the return of Kings of the South, which is their fourth year, I believe, fifth year, here at the city of Marl, and everyone knows that economic impact for that time is always pretty great. Definitely working with the chief and everybody, so we're going, we're on board. And I believe we're ready, and definitely have a future of Georgia Cyware Academy. I've mentioned them a couple of times, they're, anyone who doesn't know what they are exactly, they're a free K through twelve public school that's online with no tuition, and they have been amazing, and they love us, and they actually called last Friday, and they said that we are now their site of choice for this state of Georgia, and which means that we're going to be getting all of their other ancillary business as well, we'll get the first option, or what's called in our business, right of refusal. And so already this year, they booked their regular testing, their summer testing, they've already put their wear testing on the books, and their next year's testing. So already this year, we've gained about twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars from that one client. So that's fantastic, we're going to take good care of them. We've also booked a three-day church conference in October, which is going to be pretty great. Val has on some information, so Amazon, so we're in negotiations with Amazon now for a new hire event, and it's only two rooms, the red room and the red room, which are meeting rooms, and for those rooms, we're looking at a three-week run of for about eighteen thousand six hundred dollars with a very low impact established in the building. So that's going to be fantastic. Cosbar, so we have a big hair, hair, beauty, and barber award show coming next week to the model center, so it's going to be pretty cool, it's called Cosbar Industries, they've been great, and so much, you're really excited to see that, it's going to be, everyone who knows about hair shows, but there's like all kinds of cool little brother stuff going on, so we're going to really hook them up pretty well. We're also, we also see an increase in our corporate business companies such as Seena and APM Gemitorial, we've already booked them as well for upcoming hiring events, and also, so the owner gives a big shout-out to Val and the mayor, and everyone who, and everyone participating, putting together the job fair. The job fair has ignited, I think it's been nine halls so far, from other companies wanting to do job fairs at the model center, so that's fantastic, but this is, this is probably an example of how an example of one event can trigger business for other events, so definitely shout-out.
Yeah, and that's all Val.
So you're going to have another one on?
August twenty.
August the twentieth.
We'll be ready. Other than that, those are the updates at the marvelous model center.
Marvelous.
Any questions?
Oh, I do.
Yes, this man?
The hair show, is that out of Tampa?
Yes, the Cosbar, it's called Cosbar Industries, I'll send the link over.
Are you mean people from all over, or other states, or is it just?
I'm not sure of the attendance, but I did peruse their website, and they have a, what I can see is a regional reach, but I'll find out for sure.
But that's probably not an open-to-the-public event.
It's, well, it's a paid event, but I think it's invitation, yeah. But I can see my tickets.
Any other questions?
Deep in my pockets.
I say you have to take it to the hair show?
The irony.
All this is out there.
Look, you know, something.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, marketing agreement for the model show?
So that, it's all in, it's in the packet, and we had talked about, this is, remember, Warren is in the role as the manager of the Warren, of the Warren Center, the model center, and this is just a separate agreement that would cover, and it's basically, well, I'll call it an incentive, but it's really a program so that Warren is able to enjoy a stipend related to the events that he books. Now, it's not when they book it, it's when they, after the event has come to pass, and they pay for it, and it's based on the sales. So it's a two percent incentive for everything that's booked on the weekend, which we'll consider to be the easier days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and three percent based on sales for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And of course, we're not asking you to vote on this tonight, and Councilman Tran had asked me some questions that Chris is working to put together, to look at maybe over three, set years, if this had been in place, what would have been the resulting payout for that? And because, the reason you were able to do this differently with Warren, who is going to be put on salary, you know, we can no longer maintain him as a ten ninety-nine employee, because it's just not set up that way, is because you have an enterprise fund that would be paying the marketing agreement, and the general fund pays the salary, and that's why you're able to maintain two different payment agreements. Again, you're not voting on that tonight, so look over it, and the attorney drafted it, and so if you have any questions for her or me, let me know between now and the next meeting.
Doesn't cost us anything if he doesn't lease anything. I said, it doesn't cost us anything if he doesn't lease anything. That's true. That actually works in our favor if we need it, so it's pretty creative. Take a look at it. It's a fair way to compensate people for going extra mile without breaking them back. And we won't get into a discussion as to what other conference center managers make, and what you don't. It's a good way to try to make that happen. And y'all can talk privately about what all. We're just going to keep going, because I don't want to keep the shaft here, as we go through and take your session later, and come back. Chief, emergency medical services policy?
So it's just some housekeeping changes with our policy on how we document medical reports. Every year we have to renew our license with the State Department of Public Health, the State Office of BMS. We sent them our policy, and they said, you need to make this, this, and this changes. We've done that, we've sent it back to them, they approved it, but you have to approve it for it to be a binding agreement with them. And I can go over the details, but it's just. Housekeeping stuff that they require.
Questions? Then tell us a little bit about the ladder truck update. You don't have any yet?
Not yet. So Thursday, Chief Moss and Captain Monter are going to fly out to Texas to look at the truck and evaluate, operate, drive it, and all that, so they're going out early in the morning, and go back late at night. And when they get back, I'll ask them to give their opinion on if we should continue to move forward in the process.
What's that we're talking about?
Yes. Yes.
Can you drive it back?
They could, but they probably won't.
Just change. Any questions on the ladder truck? Done, we have a good interview, thanks. Community garden, Ritten King, ready for the long-term edit?
It's the Saturday. Val, I'll let you talk about it.
It's exciting, huh? I mean, we're gonna, we got a lot of stuff going on out there, and it looks beautiful, and looking kickoff and make you proud. A lot of garden vegetables, so maybe you can sell us some this Saturday.
My aunt, I can steal you a couple.
So, yeah, we, we're gonna have.
Charge me a hundred bucks.
Music by Robbie Lee, and decorated really nice, and looking forward to celebrating with a bunch of good-looking folks and give them awards.
And we'll be catered, and we'll have these catered, and it's all salads, chicken salad, tuna salad, egg salad, broccoli salad.
And Sylvia and Martin.
We've got a pavilion for it, looks good, and amazing, just a couple months.
Right now?
Very much so.
We've got our pollinators in place.
I was checking out the lady who had a very unique, her look like it was about the same size as everybody else's. I just wanted to see, you know, because I haven't really made a difference. If you did, I certainly can.
The lady that stood, did you?
Yes, yes. If it wasn't remarkably big, if you want to say that way. I'm looking forward to the cross-pollination of the ghost peppers, and I'll see how that works.
Maybe you're happy for it.
No, no, not my, I'm just going to watch everybody else eat some rock, and see what happens.
Is somebody really growing ghost pepper?
Yes, they are.
Who?
I think it's Dave, or either the little round, weird things. Somebody, appreciate it, I won't come the other side, I won't walk close to them.
If you haven't tried those, if you want to try them, we might be able to light it up, but we'd like to watch. It's not going to be a pleasant experience, we keep the fire department close by, for the people who start to sweat, it's pretty profound stuff.
Any volunteers? Sounds like a new chief initiation.
No, no, this didn't happen. I don't know if you remember, they had a noodle challenge, so we sat at the table, six of us, and my friend, like, we were just laughing, and they made it, and we ate it, but they snuck ghost pepper in my bowl. And while we were recording live, they said, are you okay? I started sweating. I said, did you guys make mine different? They all started laughing, it was like.
Sounds like you're a volunteer.
Ghost pepper, yeah.
Chief, make sure your people are there.
Chief, tell us a little bit about chase policy, flock camera discussion, and your community council discussion.
So the, I'll start with flock cameras initially, this is something that we talked about during the candidacy for this position. The flock cameras, we already have some that exist within the city, and they assist, they're an investigative tool that we utilize to track stolen autos, track stolen tags, track wanted persons that enter the city. Right now, we just have in specific areas that are within, they're inside the city. The most active one that we have is South Lake Parkway out the fifty-four, where we've seen the most, we've seen the most activity in terms of wanted persons located, drug activity, any stolen autos, stolen tags, like I said. So the proposal specifically is to wire the entire city up, and by that, I don't mean every five feet having a camera on the outsides of the borders of the city, but it is to have them in the surface streets that head in and out of the city. This go-around, we're just going to wire any vehicles coming, or any cameras that are coming, for vehicles that are coming inbound. And then, you know, much later on, then we can have discussions about the outbound vehicles, but quite honestly, in my experience, the inbound cameras are just good enough, because it tells you who's coming in and out, you know, who's coming in the city, whether to commit a crime, whether to pick up some folks to go commit a crime, and it's just, as I said, a stupendous investigative tool that is a, it's a boon for our ability to be able to combat crime in the city. I'm requesting it in lieu of getting the LPR cameras, I don't know if you guys have seen, LPR cameras will sit actually on a, and their license plate readers, that's an acronym for it, but they're basically sitting on the cars, just kind of those weird-looking little cameras that look like giraffe heads, and they just scan all the tags that the car drives by. The pros is that you're driving around, you can scan, you can park a lot, and it scans, if you park somewhere in an intersection, and I'll use a real popular intersection here, it's Lee Street, or, Lake Carbon and fifty-four, just park right there, and you read all these tags. However, the problem with that, the con to it is, if I happen to sign to an officer, officer has updates, officers have to get sick, officers go out on disability, officers are basically not here twenty-four, three sixty-five, seven, and so the proposal is to switch that item from purchase, or switching, so from buying those cameras, to being able to wire up the city with ten cameras inbound that are up three sixty-five, seven days a week. So the alerts that these cameras get aren't something that we have to go physically there and get it, they're shot out to the MVT terminals, basically the computer terminals that the officers have inside the cars, and so within ten, fifteen seconds, a tag hits, whether it's somebody, it's a vehicle that's associated with a wanted person for whatever crime, that comes up, it goes to the officer's tag, and it gives you an area of where the vehicle is, either by the crockstreets, you go out there, you set up, you're able to do a traffic stop, apprehend, and whatnot. They're also used for traffic enforcement as well. So that is the, that's the flock cameras in kind of a very brief explanation, but the ones that we currently have right now are working stupendously, and so we just want to be able to augment the department's ability to be able to apprehend, and thereby lower the instances in which we have victims of crime that either live in the city, or around the city, or residents in the city.
That's that. Any questions?
So I do have a question, I see on your map the placement, is there a need around, and I see where they are around South Lake Mall, is there a need, if it's not a flock camera, I think we had talked kind of about something at the hallway, is there a need to have some type of surveillance on the loop around South Lake Mall, because a lot of crimes happen in the parking lot itself, it doesn't, I guess there's a camera at the district, and there's a camera at the intersection of South Lake Parkway, would there be value in having some type of surveillance within the parking area around the mall itself?
So that's the key word, is the surveillance. So we could install cameras, and in fact, we just purchased two ring cameras for inside the district to be able to give us any kind of intel for anybody that, motion sensor activates the cameras. Eventually, once we are able to support it through IT, is to actually wire up the entire district with those, not doorbell ones, but the flood, the ring ones that are flood, and so, soon as walks in, lights go on, it starts recording, you can talk through it, you can even listen to the audio, and we'll all have access to it, so we're able to respond to them much quicker. And I think that's kind of where the surveillance portion, the flock cameras tend to be less, they can be used for surveillance, but their full capacity is that and that some, which is the traffic enforcement, which is the uploading of the hot list for all the asset recovery, for apprehension of one of suspects and stuff like that. Now, we could, that would be my, that would be my offering to address that question and the concern is to actually go with a true-to-form surveillance camera, one that we can access, one that's not just rotating like we saw recently with the presentation that we showed you, or that we had gone on Monday, but one that we can actually monitor and control, whether it be a fixed, whether it's rogue. Now, we could, that would be my, that would be my, my offering to address that question and the concern is to actually go with a true to form surveillance camera, one that we can access, one that's not just rotating like we saw recently with the presentation that we, that we showed you, or that we had gone on Monday, but one that we can actually monitor and control, whether it be a fixed, whether it's rotated, but, but yes, the flock cameras, I wouldn't necessarily recommend just for that, but there are other options that exist to be able to do what you're wanting, what you're describing.
Yeah, we have some high traffic retail areas and that's kind of, you know, what we're proud about, quite honestly.
Yes.
So, something around the mall, the options around the mall parking itself, along the Mount Zion Road corridor, as well as, I know we have quite a bit of action from time to time around Walmart.
We can discuss that in terms of, we'll come up with ideas on how to address that particular, that particular concern, per se. I think there's, there's other less robust options like flock, but absolutely, I'm definitely, I will, I will create proposals for that. If you're, what you're talking about is Walmart, the mall, and what other location, was it somewhere off of Mount, like near Mount Zion, Mount Zion?
Because I see here where it's got, um, Mount Zion at Los Trejos, which is the city limit, but then you've got, like I said, so much retail along that Mount Zion corridor.
Okay.
Maybe finding some, some key areas, even if it's, we have, we have accidents at quite a few of those intersections in addition to, so, you know, something that might address.
So, there's things like DOT cameras, and that's the mistake, and I know that they exist here in the county just from previous experience. I do have some experience in wiring and installing the type of surveillance you're talking about for either walkways, for surface street thoroughfares where there's a lot of retail, so I'm taking notes on that and I'll, I'll get your proposal on that. It's definitely good, so.
But is the proposed cost, I don't think, it's gonna cost you yearly installation, you get any number?
There is a yearly cost that will have to be budgeted for thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
For this particular proposal, only the one existing out there?
Yes, that, that's including the existing, that what we have, this is in addition to.
Okay, thirty-six thousand for how many total?
It'll be ten cameras.
So, these ten are already include what we have existing?
Yes, the three that we already have.
So, seven more?
Yes.
So, thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
Thirty-six.
And then, what is the installation, initial installation for?
Installation cost is two fifty per year.
Says total now for ten additional.
It is ten, I was, I was about to correct myself, it is ten additional, I'll tell you, we have thirteen cameras, I'm sorry.
So, that thirty-six thousand dollars like totally exists or not?
Yes, the three that we already have.
So, thirteen total for thirty-six thousand?
Yes, sir.
And then, the, the LPLs, that was about forty-seven thousand?
The LPRs were going, were budgeted for two of them and that was at forty thousand dollars, yes.
We anticipate some revenue from catching back cash.
They will definitely be able to pay for themselves, for the cost, that cost, cameras will definitely pay for themselves.
Additionally, we could have the cameras in the school zones and they will generate some level of revenue as well.
Yes, they will definitely be able to all pay for themselves.
So, that, that's an opportunity.
Well, there's, there's a bell for, as people begin to realize you have, so the first three cameras, we have paraphrasing numbers here, but I believe we raised about fifty grand.
Yes, sir.
In a relatively short period of time.
About thirty days, yes, sir.
So, okay, but somewhere along the lines at some point, it may not be as effective, which is then change on an annual basis, but either way, we'll be raising at least the amount of money that we would have spent, absolutely, we'll have at least that amount of money back in our pocket.
Just one camera covered the cost for the existing three that we have with it.
There's also Rosie projects, I want to kind of stay down to something small, and then surprise me with something decent, like, you know, catch the bad guys on the street, the real bad guys, which are the ones that are stealing your car, hurt people, things like that, that's, that's what we need.
I think that'll overall, these can, this particular apparatus system that we're gonna set up will overall help the vision of the redevelopment economically that we're looking, it'll make the area a lot more, it'll help in making the area very attractive. In my previous experience, that was, that was a key, key piece of the infrastructure to bring in the development that, that, that we're looking for here. I'm very confident in that, that's, both this, this thing going up is definitely going to be able to help us in that particular area outside of the law enforcement portion.
Other questions?
Uh, yeah, to kind of piggyback on what the councilwoman Knights said about the Mount Zion corridor, corridor going into, I think that's, is that actually a Jonesboro, or is that unincorporated? Clayton County, once you leave the city, then it's.
On the, on the Los Trejos end?
Yeah.
That's unincorporated Clayton County.
Okay, and then the opposite end, that's Horse Park, right? Once you cross, um, no, those are towards Terrible.
That would also be unincorporated place.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, we don't neighbor any city on either end of Mount Zion.
Okay, so, for that, those areas, do you know if they have cameras or are they gonna utilize cameras in those areas so that, or will ours continue to track?
So, I, and that was, that's a good question, so in conversation with Chief Roberts and Clay PD, they have somewhere between twenty, twenty-four cameras, I don't know the locations up there.
Can we get them, the locations for the council?
We can, we can, so, I think what you're trying to say is, can we extend our reach, right?
Because I think you said something about, you know, the system working, you know, I guess the county and whatever, so, once it leaves our, you know, range on Mount Zion going towards Terrible Bar.
So, the great thing about, and probably should have, I should have mentioned at the beginning, so the great thing about this flock system specifically, is any other jurisdiction, whether it be county, state, or municipality that has these cameras, we request access to theirs and then they in turn request access to ours, so it just ends up becoming this very, very large net of these clients or flock. So, we could potentially tag a car here, or there would be a car that we're looking for that we saw was here at four o'clock, and at five thirty is at Lenox, and I know that that area, their PD has flock cameras installed, so, or they go into Shamley, and we know that in Shamley, at five thirty, they were there and they stopped at one particular location, the vehicle is still there. So, I mean, we will have an investigative reach way beyond the border of the city of Martin, and that is a, again, a boon to our ability to be able to hold people accountable.
I know, I've been having a continuous problem at the Lee Street, turning into, like having at the railroad crossing?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a, any solution for that?
Oh, I have, I drew up a, a hand, I had, I drew a little sketch of how we could resolve that issue. Sure.
Doesn't include closing the right of that?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily, what it would, I mean, I could just tell you, it's funny, when it came up, we had the discussion with Sylvia and I, I was like, you know, this, this intersects with problems, because I was sophomore in high school, and that's, and it was up my, because I was driving. But that right-hand turn lane that turns north onto fifty-four, and of course, I wasn't prepared to present this, but it's just been revealed, we'll talk about it, I mean, I, I, I don't propose to have all the answers to every single question, but it's just me having, me being a resident, me being, you know, having lived here, me growing up here. So, that dedicated right-hand turn lane to fifty-four north that passes the post office and it passes North Lee Street. Rather than allowing that traffic from, from Lake Harbor to just merge into that right and start going, what you do is, you can take that lane partially, and my, my sketch is much better to explain, but you take part of that lane, you turn into a gore, a gore would be an extension, it closes it off, not necessarily to all traffic, but just that right-hand turn traffic. For you to come off of North Lee Street, if you're going towards Lake Harbor, you can only take that turn to the right to go to fifty-four northbound. You can't cross over, which that's where the problem is, to the left-hand turn lane to go to seventy-five on fifty-four. The traffic coming from Lake Harbor will then make a right-hand turn and only be able to make a right-hand turn because the gore won't allow them to go straight through. Now, to allow people to still go from Lake Harbor to make a right-hand turn lane to fifty-four north, the straight lane that comes over here, into Marrow Road, you make that straight and a right-hand turn. It's not gonna affect traffic in a sense because nobody ever stops to just turn, you know, you go, light is green, you go forward, you go right, so you've, you've got traffic constantly flowing westbound onto Marrow Road, and then you've got traffic that's constantly moving northbound and out of it. So, you're taking three lanes and you're turning it into two, but you're eliminating having, by putting a physical barrier now on the porch, on the part that comes off of Lee Street, and to kind of hook and make that right onto fifty-four northbound, obviously, you can't put it on the train tracks, but you do put a physical barrier, like the plastic markers that are there now, which were great on, on the opposite end, in my opinion. And you, but you do that same effect on the right-hand turn lane dedicated, and so, basically, what you do is you're basically pushing that, that traffic that would normally go on that right-hand turn lane and turn right and go northbound fifty-four into the straight lane, and then you just straighten it to the right. Again, I would have done a traffic study, I have very limited civil engineering experience, but that, I think, in my opinion, would solve the issue of people trying to go across and make that left, plus the gore also gives us a better ability to park a car there because there's no traffic. You're not blocking any traffic going to the right anymore, coming off of Lake Harbor, you park a car there.
But, but, but you wouldn't be able to put anything anywhere near the railroad?
No, you wouldn't, no, absolutely not, we're the, we're the arms for that.
Where the railroad is, they, they know where they cross from North Lee Street to make a left turn and go straight more.
So, without exploring what kind of physical barrier we can put there, we can create a phys, there is a physical barrier that we could, and it wouldn't have to be concrete, or it could even be the plastic ones, but you try to get it as close as you could to, you know, that, that particular section.
And it may just be striding, right, at council?
So, yeah, you can go as, you can go as, as cost effective, as just basically striding, and/or putting the little plastic ones to something if you wanna actually, not necessarily put up like, you know, like barriers that you see on the highway, but.
Can we put a camera out there to collect?
So, so the red speed.
Every time I go there, eight people.
I know.
Almost like wanna hit me to get, dude out there.
So, red, red speed will catch feeders, flock will catch.
Just an attitude.
Flock will catch tags that have either been expired or unlicensed drivers, you know, there's just something that's specific, I, I don't know of a camera that you can just put there to grab people crossing, unless for that, you just put an officer there. Which that's what we've, we've been able to do, but at the same time, it's not a twenty-four hour type thing where we're there exactly when somebody sees us cross over that traffic, or cross, cross that, but I, I'm familiar with it because.
I'm interested to see the actual design.
Yes.
It explains better, I think.
I would love to give you guys that, that sketch, it was just something that Sylvia and I were talking about, and I was like, I took some pictures off of Google Earth from different angles, and I drew out what it would look like specifically, so I don't wanna affect the businesses, obviously, I know this is way beyond law enforcement, but I don't wanna affect the businesses that are on Lee Street on either side, right? So, you're still allowed for traffic to come and go, what you're doing is just controlling that, the, the people that are coming off Lee Street and cutting across, and that, there is a way to do it, and I could find, I can come up with some suggestive solutions, but to me, that is probably the best way to be, to not close off the traffic going across, you kind of restrict it a little, but, but what it definitely does restrict and fund and channelize, to use that term, is basically.
We're up to see.
You know, but I'll, I'll, I'll get some sketches and I'll, and I'll show it to you guys in terms of what you think.
You still got two items to discuss.
I know, I know.
Community council and your chase policy.
All right, so the chase policy is in conjunction with the flock proposal, the chase policy right now that we have that exists is for forcible felonies only, and for those that don't know forcible felonies, murder, aggravated assault, aggravated battery, rape, so if you know that there's somebody out there that is in a vehicle and they're running from you and you know you can associate, or you can tie them into this particular crime occurring, you can chase. The difference now on this one is slated more specifically towards allowing the officers to chase for property, so basically, and I mean, I explained it best with this, you have a stolen auto, the stolen auto's been involved in entering autos, it's been involved in burglaries, it could even be involved in forcible felonies. Rather than not being able to chase because it's not a forcible felony that occurred in front of you, you can actually chase them now because it's recovered, because it's a stolen auto. And to be more specific, and I'll, and I'll read directly from the proposal, the alternative is just the forcible felony policy exists in the form of the restricted proposed pursuit policy that permits police officers and supervisors to perform an objectively reasonable assessment of the pursuit in order to determine which situation warrants initiating, continuing, or ultimately canceling a vehicle pursuit. I'll get into the bullet points, so the proposed policy provides guidance to officers and supervisors in reaching a conclusion of what warrants and what does not warrant a pursuit, notable points of sole pursuit, and I'll pause here for a second. If this gets proposed, this policy amendment goes, it's not that tomorrow we're chasing, as, as, as I'm gonna get into, there are a lot of training and certification requirements that have to be had by going to the academy to be able to do these immobilization techniques, whether they be channelization, and I'll get into that now, but I, I just kind of wanna throw that caveat out there, this isn't, you know, we approve it Tuesday and then next Monday, you know, it's, it's everybody, you know, every member himself, that, that's not it at all. I understand it's a high liability, I understand the reason why we're having even this discussion about it is because it is a high liability, if it's something that does not happen, because I love to provide options, we will find a way around it to make it work, this is not going to, this isn't a deal breaker at all whatsoever, trying to, to kind of double up on something that I'm looking for approval on, but it does allow the officers to give more flexibility to be able to effectively utilize what the flock cameras are going to produce. But again, all of this with the caveat in that they will be receiving copious amounts of training, and not everyone is just going to be able to do this right off the rip, and this is training for officers and training for supervisors. One for them to be able to recognize what they can and can't, and supervisors to be able to recognize what they can approve and what they can't approve, and obviously, you know, consequences that come as a result of being able to do it right, and kudos in doing it wrong, and be held accountable for doing it wrong. So, by initiating the pursuit, the officers carefully consider the immediate facts present at the time, the driving environment, the seriousness of the offense, the need for apprehension, all the possible consequences of initiating a chase, and most importantly, the safety of all persons involved directly or indirectly. Officers shall attempt to anticipate flight and utilize pursuit prevention tactics like blocking and boxing, if tactics to prevent a pursuit fail, officers shall utilize techniques to minimize duration of the pursuit, which would again be blocking, pit, and or tire the placing devices. And shall, to the extent possible, influence the direction of the suspect vehicle by using the channelization technique, so I'll give you the definition for channelization, which is a technique where objects are placed in the anticipated or actual pathway of a pursued vehicle, which tends to alter the vehicle's intended direction of travel, and then PIT is a maneuver used by officers to initiate, terminate a pursuit by initiating contact with the fleeing vehicle in a safe and controlled manner. The PIT maneuver is considered a governmental use of force and is subject to the rulings of the civil supreme court, Scott B. Harris, Grant B. Connor, Tennessee B. Garten. This technique allows for the immobilization of a vehicle, to be more specific, the technique allows for the immobilization of a fleeing vehicle prior to it reaching an unsafe speed that places drivers that are on the roadway in danger. The potential application for this technique will be rooted in comprehensive policy in which more officers will be carefully trained and certified on the PIT technique by the Georgia Public Safety Training Center, down in, in Forsyth. So, officers permitted to pursue, just another caveat to this, officers are permitted to pursue suspected felons when such a pursuit is objectively reasonable, and the measure of reasonableness shall include the time of day, of week, lighting conditions, vehicle and pedestrian traffic, the type of roadway, weather conditions, conditions of the roadway, the conditions of the emergency vehicle and the fleeing vehicle, the driving ability and the training of the officer, and speeds of the involved vehicles. Officers are not permitted to pursue for misdemeanor criminal or misdemeanor traffic offenses, and I'll give you a good misdemeanor criminal trespass, another common misdemeanor is loitering and prowling, things like that, the officer is not allowed to, to chase for those types of crimes. In the existing policy, you're not allowed to do that either, officers are not permitted to pursue for misdemeanor criminal or misdemeanor traffic offenses, there are only three exceptions, officers may pursue drivers whose reckless driving seriously threatens the safety of the most, of other motorists and pedestrians, and when such reckless driving occurs before the initiation of the pursuit. So, for example, and I've seen it, I've seen it unfortunately off fifty-four, people just driving, cutting in and out, fast and furious, and whatnot, when the driving of that sort becomes, or running people off the road, or causing accidents as a result of someone driving like that, that is, you're able to pursue. Now, you can't light up the, you can't light the car up, you can't turn your, activate your emergency equipment, and then they start acting that way, and then you chase, something like that has to have happened. Something like that has to have happened, you have to witness it firsthand before you initiate your pursuit. The second one would be moral police officers who have received training on the detection and apprehension of drivers intoxicated by alcohol and/or drugs. May be permitted to pursue suspected impaired drivers when those trained officers can articulate a reasonable suspicion that the driver of a fleeing vehicle is intoxicated. And such opinion is formed before the initiation of pursuit. So. This particular type of chase happens in this manner. So you pull someone over, you begin to speak to them, they, they drop the window and you smell alcohol. And they take off on you. Uh, thereby, you know, running up on, well, what I've seen in my experience, running up on a sidewalk or, you know, running into other cars. That is, that is a traffic defense that you can't chase for. Uh, that puts, that, that puts everyone at, at large in danger, you know, when, when somebody takes off on, from an officer on a traffic stop for a DUI. Uh, officers may pursue the view, the driver of the vehicle involved in hit and run near a vehicle crash. When such crash involves suspected injuries to the occupants of other involved vehicles. Um, and that's pretty self-explanatory. You, you, you get a hit and run or somebody's been injured. Um, and said person, um, and, and, and one of the vehicles that initiated the crash picks off on you. That's, that's a, that would be the third and final one that officers would be able to chase for. Uh, in addition to providing more robust guidance on the initiation of a pursuit, the proposed revision also provides detailed direction. On the use of roadblocks and application of the pit maneuver. Specifically, the proposed policy requires the consideration of the factors established in Grant B. Connor. Namely, how serious is the traffic offense that the officer suspects at the time of the use of the tactic? Is a physical threat to the officer or any other person and how significant is that threat? Is the suspect actively resisting or attempting to evade arrest, lifeline? Roadblocks may be used only in the case of suspected fleeing violent felons who escape poses a danger to life. So this isn't roadblocking, it's something that is going, that would happen on a, on, on, on a consistent. Uh, on a consistent, uh, or the frequency will be, it would be happening all the time. Uh, a pit maneuver is considered a use of force. It may be used when the officer initiated the pit, is trained in using the technique and only that. Uh, the risk of harm of people of a continued pursuit outweighs the risk of harm to people from an intentional vehicular collision. And the use of this technique is approved by supervisor. Unless the pursuit itself has already been approved by field supervisor, an additional time necessary to receive. The separate authorization for the pit will prevent the authority to utilize the maneuver more safely. Uh, the officer initiated the pit has carefully considered the inside assessment. And evaluated vehicle and speed considerations and reached an objectively reasonable conclusion as to the use of force to apprehend the fleeing suspect. Experience I have in this particular, uh, policy, uh, came about as a result of. Uh, a young man who had, uh, who was fourteen-year-old, was driving a vehicle. Uh, and, uh, and eluded a, a particular traffic stop. And prior to getting to an, uh, an area where he was going to be able to elude completely, mainly get on the highway. And speeds began to reach seventy-plus miles an hour, they were training up. Uh, the officer under my command was able to conduct the pit maneuver. But only after he had passed apartments because he was concerned that the vehicle was going to go into apartment, into the apartment complex. Uh, or bring his liquor, if you guys know that, that's on B. Prado. Uh, and so that, 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 this particular policy was born of that level of articulation and consideration. Um, on the officer's behalf to be able to conduct this maneuver so that said person wouldn't necessarily be able to escape. It was done, there were no injuries, obviously the vehicle, the vehicle was damaged. And, uh, and so it was a safe conclusion to, uh, that particular incident. But that incident is what, 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 it was, this, this policy was born out of that particular incident. Uh, because it was so well handled in terms of articulation and consideration for not just the person fleeing himself, but also. You know, uh, in that particular area, you know, the apartments were below the street level, any car that would have outpassed one of those barriers could land in one of those buildings. Um, and cause further. But those, that, those are, that, those are the two main, not two main, but everything I talked about is, is. The difference between what we have and, and what we are asking, uh, in amendment.
Let's ask some questions.
Will all the officers be trained in to be able to be safe or if, uh, just, uh, you know, an officer pulls someone over and they detect?
They'll be trained on what they can and can't.
Okay, all the officers?
Uh, everybody will.
Okay.
In order to be able to utilize some of these techniques that we, that I talked about, they'll have to be certified. If I can get everybody certified, absolutely, that's the intent is to get everybody certified. But if they are not certified, they are not going to be authorized to conduct any of these techniques at all whatsoever. Now they'll be able to pursue, absolutely. Uh, with authorization from the, from the supervisor. And at one particular point in time, if they decide to cancel, they cancel it, you know, and we'll chalk that up to the game and, and sooner or later we'll, we'll come back to them. Uh, and that's where the flock cameras come in and play as well because then you radio ahead, which is, plays right into the question you were asking earlier. As you let Lake Placid go fifty-four, Lake City Forest Park, hey guys, you got this car moving up northbound. They can start picking it up because it'll hit on their flock camera as well. They can, they can pick it up, up there as well.
Any questions? Question? Alright, then, does this tie into the community council discussion?
Yes, so the community council discussion is a, is a, is, it's not necessarily a proposal, it's just an idea, a concept. Um, it was born out of one of the FBI Academy Cup courses that I took. Uh, where we had, where this is implemented successfully. Um, in, in, uh, in other agencies and I thought that this would be a perfect opportunity to have. In, in, in light of making an amendment like this, including. The residents of the city in the discussions for any of these types of incidents that come. And that's not just for chasing in general. But in having input, uh, and, and I'll actually read you from here. The purpose of the community advisory council is to establish a conduct and maintain a mechanism for the timely identification of concerns. And/or issues of the community, as well as to assist in the identification and development of appropriate responses to areas of concerns or issues with the police department. To act as an advisory group to achieve police and police management. To act as a conduit for information between the community and the police department. And to promote community awareness, understanding, and involvement in police programs and services. Uh, I think it would be a great, uh, I wouldn't call it a venue, but it'd be definitely a great platform. For the residents of the city of Marl that are interested and want to become a part of and be representatives, um, for your districts. So the way I, I, I'm drawing it up is Marl's broken up into four districts. So we have a representative for each district, so make it four and then two at large. And then we can include the businesses. Uh, and also, eh, eh, you know, the clergy that want to be involved. And so the membership for this one particular, for this particular rising council will last for a year. And it's something that means monthly and it's something that's gonna have minutes and, I, originally it was about four pages, but I think I, I think I submitted. Uh, I was gonna tell Councilman Train, I apologize, it was probably those a hundred and twenty-something pages were. Uh, I was probably responsible for about seventy of them because it was policy in there for, for, for the, for the chase policy, so. Um, but there are, basically that is, that is, uh, that is, uh, it's going to be a good. Way for, one, for us to get to know each other, two, to be able to drum up, um, the time to come and get together and talk about things. I understand, and even a conversation with Val that I had last night, there's a lot of different concerns about things that happened, um, on that Lee Street corridor. Perfect time, perfect, uh, venue for them to be able to, for, for the residents to be able to come in and talk to, directly to the chief of police. Um, and command staff about those and get things, and get things in place, get rolling to be able to, uh, affect some change. Uh, the only way that we, that, that we're effective is by getting the community input. Well, I, I'm not, I, I tried for a long time to be omniscient, but I can't be omniscient, so I, you know, I can't be everywhere at one, at one time, I had the officers everywhere at one time, but. Uh, what helps a lot, and I've been telling a lot of folks in the crowd meetings we've been going to. Call nine-one-one. That's what we're here for, just call nine-one-one. A lot of folks have a lot of information about, yeah, this, this, there's drug activity here, drug activity. Like, hey, did you call nine-one-one? Would you let us know? And they have, for, for whatever reason they have, but then that, 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 that fosters, that festers into, uh, frustration. And the frustration in general with either the lack of perceived services. But something like this definitely be able to allow, not just anybody, but the, the representatives come in and what they hear, let us know about it, we can come up with something actionable. You know, I, I could, I could give you lip service all day long about how important it is, but I mean, it's important. Uh, to a degree that I'm proposing through this memo to stand up. A, 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 a council report that is going to address that directly, on top of having nine-one-one.
Excellent, Chief. Thank you. Alright, um, Rose Gray, Val, what you got?
Good news, uh, we, we have twenty-two events around today, so that's, that's pretty good. Uh, you know, we, we're giving back to the community, we're making a lot of events happen and I want to thank everyone, Public Works, Police Department. Mayor Council, City, and everyone who's been able to attend, so that's very impressive. Um, the app is done, so we should, I should be sending you guys an update on like the instructions of how to access it. Uh, cool features, uh, it's gonna help, uh, drive a lot of tourists in our area with events, so. It has all the businesses things to do, um, hotels, everyone's on hand. Brandon helped us take some cool photos, so it looks even better, so we have some face guy, but looks really awesome. Um, met with, uh, Clayton State University ladies, so we built that bridge and, uh, they're gonna start attending all of our events, so it's gonna be big this August and a comeback pool for us. And, uh, our events is gonna be a lot bigger and they wanna set up a table at every event, so they can be a part of it, maybe have their mascot out. And, uh, they're interested in getting that new president out, uh, to our, uh, uh, back-to-school event. Somebody, uh, wanted, uh, to meet you guys, the new president, yes, I played. Uh, they, they will, she will be coming to our food truck event starting in August. Uh, she has the first look of, uh, freshman back to school, so you will see him a lot more.
I think we gotta get an introduction.
You will?
At the council meeting.
Will you make it happen? Alright.
Food truck's probably a little better than the, it's not as boring.
Well, they don't have to stay.
Oh.
And, uh, good news is, uh, we secured, uh, the wine on Wednesday with, uh, grits and jelly butter. For September twenty-second. Grits and jelly butter. You know it?
Oh, that's not food.
I thought it was food.
What school are you doing?
Good stuff and, um, uh, busy week, uh, we got food truck fun days, movie nights, uh, gonna give out, uh, free popcorn and. First hot and it's no cold, so you gotta, you gotta make sure you're there. Uh, drafted and, uh, garden ribbon cutting and another amazing job fair. Um, so the T-room proposal, we, uh, we have, we recommend, uh, we have four proposal. And, uh, I would, uh, there's three that qualify, so we're looking forward to the, our next meeting to, to choose one and, uh, very happy that, uh. We're getting closer to these, uh, letter of intents, you know, getting knocked out so we can get, uh, uh, business moving in. Also, uh, good news about the district, uh, we have one house left, all of the, of the other ones have letter of intent, so. The yellow one, uh, tour, uh, Miami, uh, Palm Island, he's very interested, so he's gonna. Looking forward to, for the letter of intending in that yellow, yellow house. So then after that, we're, we're full with the houses, so. Uh, we met with David Lee, uh, is looking to, uh, have a night market concept. And also, uh, Brian from the exotic team, he got a lot of business potential, so. Maybe working towards an amphitheater in the back area where that, uh, behind those small shops, so. Maybe tie everything together, we'll, we'll have some good stuff happen.
That's a good one. It's actually smart.
And, um, that, let's, let's, that, what he brought to the meeting this afternoon at five, let's get that scanned in if he didn't send you an email so that everybody can take our.
And it was a cross-reference of ideas and mysteries, people who have real money, real investors, some a bit small, some a bit large. It really just depends on what's happening in the city, of course, you know, about, we marketed everything we had, including other things that we didn't really put on the table yet. Uh, they have their own funding, uh, and it just says, this, this is how it works, folks, you know, we gotta, we gotta play the game a little bit. And he'll take a bite on something, let's just see what it is. But you'll, you'll like the visuals.
Yeah, we, we're selling water out of that, you know, we're making it happen, so hopefully, uh, yeah, I mean, it's just a pot of water now, making good use of it.
Well, it's not fair, but.
So, uh.
Strength in the arts, he's next time.
Sell some of those bushes in his room.
I can say like your S M O. So, uh, good, uh, good ribbon cutting today, looking forward to do another one and, uh, giving back to this community and. They really appreciate everyone coming out and this, this is what it's all about. It's, uh, it's amazing ribbon cutting. Tomorrow is, today was Picasso's flat room. So many people had that experience, uh, even the fire department, we got a piece of it, right?
You're wearing two of them too, I see.
Yeah, it's still here.
Is that the one?
And, uh, it was fun, so, uh, so already doing a lot of videos and sharing it, so the whole work and experience what Marl has to offer. From commercial, from the police department, from the fire, just letting them know what, you know, what our city is doing. And, uh, tomorrow Atlanta Philly Italian pasta and stuff, I don't know, it's just hard names to remember, but we're gonna be there to kick it off, it's some, we get to eat tomorrow, so it's a lot of food.
Yeah, girl, that's for me.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, just, uh, and then the welcome sign, it's, it's here to the left side, so we're, we're looking to work some magic and get it lined up and, uh. Hopefully, I get it going, start advertising.
How far we pick what we decided to do, so, uh. They have an option that might not require that.
Yeah, I, I've, I've spent some time in conversation with county this week, uh, and, well, today's due, it was been last week. And, um, I'm working on the solution that will allow us to maybe occupy a space in their conduit. Um, and so, but it would be temporary, but temporary may be for a few years while we work out our own permits with G-Dot, so. That was pretty, pretty exciting, pretty exciting news.
Yes.
But, well, it's only gonna be exciting if it actually, if they actually say yes, but good conversations.
And, um, yeah, we have a backup option maybe if we have to, no, we probably won't need to.
I mean, we're not able to.
The guy, uh, looking at the tourist center, uh, get back with you?
Yes, he's looking to tour again tomorrow, Sanchez.
From Foxconn.
Yeah, it's a team.
Oh, yeah?
To both of them, him and his partner.
Betsy.
Very, uh, promising, they really like it.
Yeah, now, are you talking about his business partner or his wife?
He's the business partner.
Yeah, okay, which I think maybe actually his brother.
His brother.
Yeah, he's, he's not brother, but he's.
Oh, okay.
They're not brother, but they did.
Yeah, known each other a long time, yeah.
You might see more here, this, uh, yellow, uh, golf cart that matches his car.
Yeah, I passed it on the road, I passed it on the road with his golf cart, they were headed to the path.
Golf cart number four, folks, we're moving on.
And, um, yeah, last but not least, uh, got some plans coming up for that Lake Harvard, that was corner, hopefully, uh.
That's it, one of the proposals, that's, that's one that he has an interest in.
That you'll get tomorrow when we scan it in. Did Brian send us an email?
No, I'm gonna scan it, I'm gonna get it scanned.
So that party is not gonna be, the list is not gonna be renewed, okay?
No.
Oh, yeah, they, they should be moving out August first.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys. Any, any question?
Uh, I see that, uh, we, we dropped the yard sale from the list.
And, um.
Ford, you've got some stuff you want to do.
And Mayor, I, I'm sorry, the, the police chief meant to, uh, introduce his newest.
So I was gonna look, this is, this is actually the best one of all of them, but. We, on, on Monday, Sergeant Melanie Rodriguez started. She is the founding member of the Marl Police Department's Community Engagement Unit. Again, for, I know some, a lot, lots of the folks left, but following up on the chief's community, uh, council and, and our need to augment. Our relationship with, uh, already the support that, that the city's version of the show, the police department. Melanie is, uh, is, is gonna be heading up that group. She's gonna be involved in a lot, uh, a lot of crowd events, I'm gonna let her speak on it a little bit, or at least introduce herself. But Melanie is homegrown, she graduated from Marl High School in two thousand and three.
Right.
And she went, she graduated. She, uh, graduated from Clayton State University, that one I don't know.
I think it was in twelve, two thousand and twelve.
In two thousand and twelve, she spent some time working for Sheriff Hill. And spent some time working in Riverdale as well, so she is homegrown talent. I stole her away from my previous agency.
No, you didn't steal.
I did, you're right, I did. No, not even bar. I can't, I, I, I followed through on, on one of the conversations we had had previously, which was to keep our homegrown talent here on the south side of the south side. Um, and that's, that's what we did with this hire is, is follow through on that. She is excellent. She will be, she's fluent in Spanish, uh, making her the second. She will be, she's fluent in Spanish, uh making her the second uh fluent Spanish speaker outside of me in the police department, so. Melanie, I don't, no, go ahead, you're you're good, go ahead.
Hello, I'm glad to be here, I'm I'm very excited to be in the city of Marl. I look forward to working with the community and everyone and also giving back to pretty much where I grew up. So I'm definitely looking forward to working with all of you and getting to meet you on a personal level. Um tomorrow will be my first event, I'll be at the ribbon cutting tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that. And um all the events that are coming up, I will be at the proud meetings as well this weekend, I believe there's two if I'm not mistaken. Um I will be there and I just look forward to meeting everyone. Um so, and if you need me, need anything from me, um I don't know everything just yet, I'm kind of getting acquainted, but I'm willing to help. Thank you.
Now for the main event, well, actually, uh if somebody wants to go get a cup of coffee, uh you need, uh then we'll start the council meeting in about three minutes.